Welcome to It's in the Ballad. I'm your host and we have our candidates. Phil is our emcee for the questions and welcome to It's in the Ballad. Phil standing in our candidates' way is your vote. All right, I'm back. All right, welcome back to It's in the Ballad. We're going to start our first round of questions. Each candidate has one... Oh, sorry. We're going to start with our introductions, our opening statements. Each candidate has one minute and I will randomly generate the order. Okay, so to start off, we have Bill.
Oh, cool. Thank you. Hi, I'm Bill Hammond. I'm a first-term councillor, hoping to get a second term. My main concentration this term will be to get the debt down or get the debt into a manageable area and work on keeping the rate rises down. We're in the middle of a crisis, a financial crisis, and we've just got to work through it. So let's have more of a business view on council.
Thank you very much. Let's hear it for Bill. All right, next up, Matt. Matt's here in spirit. Are you there, Matt?
Yeah, Kia ora, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you loud and clear. Go ahead.
Yeah, everyone, I'm Matt Carey. So this is Bill, first-term councillor, running for a second term. A little bit about me, long career, half my life almost in the military. I've been an upper hut resident initially since 2007, and then a couple of short... Both of our kids grew up here, go to school here. I suppose the council ran for council because I saw through working as a public... for a little bit more policy advice that sort of lends that in a central agency to support local government thinking. I'm really proud. We've had some good results in some of the things I wanted to see, like a balanced budget, working towards better assets has been included in the long-term plan. So I'm happy to see that stay and that good.
Oh, all right, let's hear it for Matt. All right, next up, we have Heather.
And perhaps we should clarify, I'm Heather Newell. Thank you. I'm standing again for council. I've been on council for a number of terms since 1989. I've recently been Chair of Policy, Hut Valley Services, and I'm very interested in resource management. I believe that right now we need a steady hand and experience around council table. Now is not the time for radical change. I work in the community in upper hut and I have family connections here in upper hut. Collegially around the table, I think we need a lot of collaboration and we're looking for fresh faces on the council to be in that collaboration role. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, Nigel.
I've lived in upper hut most of my life and I've enjoyed living in this environment. I'm happy to help with things like frost bird planting and so on. I've been doing that for a few years. I also have been involved with the Upper Housing Trust for a few years and so I'm aware that we need appropriate affordable accommodation for many more people in upper hut. So that's one of the issues that I'm interested in and will take action on if I get the chance. I'm also interested in recycling and reuse of resources and I spend some of my time in Wellington, working with the Free Storm.
Thank you, Nigel. Next, we have Rachel.
I'm Rachel Tukaki Kingi and I'm from Ngaitirangi. My name's Rachel Tukaki Kingi and I'm from Ngaitirangi. I was born in upper hut at Eldersley Hospital, a maternity hospital. Raised here, went to St Joseph's Primary, am still linked to St Joseph's Catholic Church. My father raised my children here, my grandchildren are here. Why am I standing? This is my first time standing for council. And honestly, the real reason I'm standing is I love upper hut. I love our city and I love the family-friendly environment that we have. I think our previous councils have done some really wonderful things and I just want to bring a voice to the table for people who don't always get to have a say. And also I want to be able to connect to the community. Kia ora.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good Preet.
Hello, everyone. My name is Good Preet Singh-Dylan. A local small business person, dedicated volunteer and a proud father of two beautiful children, me and my wife. We're raising our kids in beautiful upper hut around the valleys. Running a small business as a taxi has given me a lot of exposure about the city. I'm pretty lucky to be on the roads of this beautiful city about eight to 10 hours a day. I have a first-term experience what people needs in a city and I believe that I can work on those areas. Running for the council to focus on the basics, balance the books. I believe that it is a tough time for all of us. We have a cost of living crisis, inflation, and all of these are hitting hard when the rates are rising as well. So I believe in fair rates, transparency, accountability, and I believe in listening, educating and working for our community. Ask for your chance to serve you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we have Henry.
Talu fa. My name is Henry Gray. I am probably fairly young to be standing for something like this, but I did go to school with Dylan and I believe he was younger than I. So the reason I just asked two minutes ago, or 10 minutes ago, before I walked in here, I was asked by someone quite high in the council here, "Why were you standing, Henry?" I came in 2010. I was brought here by St Pat's Silverstream, changed my life and my family are here and the audience. We've always known upper hut as home now. I'm the first of our family to be here and growing up with the boys in the hostel and all upper hut kids. I currently volunteer and work as partly volunteer in upper hut rams and I've been a firefighter for over 10 years in upper hut Silverstream. So why I stand for the council? If get elected, I just want to be the bridge for the youth, the future of our city, bring it into our hands and we can control it a bit more. Provide opportunities because I run a company, a small construction company in upper hut and all of the hut valley. So we're really looking to... I'm not about too much of a change. It's about bringing in the right energy to help the change. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Okay. Oh! Sorry, not on the list. Helen, Helen, I'm going to redo the list. You are up.
Kia ora, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Kia ora, my name is Helen Swales and I'm standing for council because I believe upper hut's best days are still ahead. I bring proven leadership, a track record of delivering for our community and a practical, common sense approach to decision-making. I will work to keep rates fair, focus spending on essential infrastructure and ensure every dollar is used wisely. I'm committed to open, transparent government where residents are heard and involved in the decisions that shape our future. I'm a champion, local business, support community groups and protect the character and environment that makes upper hut such a great place to live. This selection is about strong leadership you can trust, leadership that listens, acts and delivers. Together, we can build a thriving, connected and resilient upper hut. I'm Helen Swales, your voice, your advocate, your neighbour. Let's make it happen.
Thank you very much, Helen. Okay, we're going to get to our first round of questions. We have here our question host, Paul. Thank you for being with us. All right, let's...
Oh, yes. They're not the ones answering the questions.
Fair call, fair call.
So you give me the name and I get the question.
First, Good Preet.
I'm going number seven.
Number seven, please.
I give out a question so that he can press the right button to bring it up on the thing. Question C. What council committees would you prefer to be on if elected?
That is a really interesting question. I was thinking on the way here. So I'd like to be on the community grants committee, but at the same time, performance and policy committee. I believe that will give me a good exposure to know where the money is going and I can advocate the right things on behalf of our community.
We have a button. Helen.
Thank you. I think this is a really, really important question because it gives you an insight as to how you understand how council works. The most important committee for me is risk and assurance and then it's followed by finance and performance. Policy is where we make the policies and then full council is where we collaborate. I'm also on the hearings committee, which I think is really, really important because it directs and gives us some sense of where we are going. The chief executives committee is another really important one because it's the only one that we actually employ. I would also like to sit on the contracts committee if it should come back. I've been privileged to sit on the regional committees. Regional as in the new watered entity, I'd like to be on that. I sit currently as the alternate on the regional transport, Wellington Regional Leadership and the Hut Valley Management Subcommittee. These are all really important committees that give you the voice regionally as a council and these are the ones that I think are important that I'd like to be on. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. All right, and next up is Helen.
Twenty-eight.
Question N for Millie. What will you do to stop poor council expenditure, allocate resources to critical infrastructure and rein in huge increases in the rates?
I think this is a really important question. That's why I'd like to stand to address it. When you look at the LTP and I look at some of the expenditure that we've got, we've got H2O hydro pool, which is valued at $13.6 million. Do we really need to do it now that we've just refurbished the pool? Is it critical? Possibly not. I'd like to also re-scope the Ferguson Ward Waka Tiki Street intersection. I'd like to actually... The reason why I'd like to re-scope it is that we're looking in the long-term plan at an integrated transport system and maybe that might change. But also I'd like to cut wasted spending and I'd like to go through a line-by-line adjustment as to what we spend our money in. I think it's important that at these times where we're poor with regards to finances, that we prioritise the critical infrastructure that we've got. We need to look and make sure that what all of the decisions that we make are transparent and we bring the community with us.
Thank you, Helen. Nigel?
If we were using...
Oh, oh.
What number would you like?
Okay. As if it was transferable votes, I'll have one for Nigel.
One for Nigel.
Question R. Upper hut City Council doesn't have many places where tactical tiles, tactile tiles are in use on footpaths to assist users who are visually impaired to know where it's safe to cross the road and what type of crossing they are using. Is this a core function that upper hut city council should provide or is it a nice-to-have?
Protecting the safety and the mobility of our citizens is a core function and this is something that should be a priority for the council. It's not just a nice-to-have.
Thank you very much. Oh, and we have a button. Good Preet.
Yeah, I think I have a personal experience with that when we talked about the pedestrian crossings and I brought this to the attention of the concerned people unofficially that around upper hut in pedestrian areas, we need more visibility. And it is very important because I have been on the road most of the time. I have acknowledged a number of vehicles that were about to hit pedestrians. So it is very important that we put more lights and make visibility around pedestrian areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, and we have a button on the button. Rachel.
I'd just like to add because I feel quite strongly too. Safety and accessibility should be considered a core service. It's not an optional extra. I think everyone deserves to navigate our city confidently and safely. Accessibility is not a luxury, it's a basic right.
Thank you very much. And next is Rachel.
Oh, no. Seventeen.
Question H. What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member?
I feel like I should stand for every question, really. I bring strong communication skills, the ability to connect with people from all walks of life and a collaborative approach to problem solving. I've worked in roles that require... Sorry. I've worked in roles that require balancing multiple priorities, making fair decisions and following through on commitments, which I think are all essentials for council work. I've worked in frontline roles, frontline at places like MSD, Work and Income. I've worked for community groups and I'm a connector. I love connecting people to solutions and that's, for me, one of the most important things I bring to council.
Thank you very much. Bill, your turn.
Question I. What should local government be doing about climate change, Bill?
Out of all of them, I was hoping this was the one I didn't get. No, I know, but I'll be the standout with this one. No, I'll stand up for this one. Look, you know, it's sort of just, we've just got to use a common sense approach to it and just follow what the others are doing. We're not going to change the world. We're not going to stop climate change. We've just got to either go with it and be prepared and put the money really where it is needed most, which will be probably in storm damage in upper hut.
Thank you, Bill. All right, Henry, your turn.
I'll take number nine, please.
Question O. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing your community?
Obviously, there's quite a lot of challenges that we face as a community, but why I stand is for our youth and my work and experience in working with our youth and employing youth is that this is the future of our upper hut. Everything that we're trying to do now and have done in the last terms leads us to this. And I look out in the back, my kids are here. I'd like to open the doors, continue to open doors and connect our youth to our society and to our community and continue to work for the future because I would like to build an upper hut that I could honestly say and be proud that my kids are going to grow up in here and have all the opportunities that we can prepare now for them and be equipped to live their lives in our upper hut.
Thank you very much. And we have a button. Helen.
Thank you. So I think that some of the biggest things that our community are going to be facing are the avalanche of the government legislative change that is coming down, which is the Resource Management Act, the Local Water Done Well and even the fast-track bill. And these are just a few of the things. But on top of that, we've got rising cost of living and rates that our community have to face. We have infrastructure, which is under pressure, that we need to start sorting out. We have housing affordability and the choice of what is being delivered in our community. We have environmental protection that we need to look after and address. And we have public engagement and trust with our own city council. These are all issues that I would like to address.
Thank you, Helen. We now have Rachel.
Okay, twenty-one.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. I was looking at the next list. Actually, we have Heather.
Because Rachel's had a turn.
Yes, Rachel's had a turn. No, no, don't wait. He's on the list. I said I was looking at the wrong list. It is Heather's turn.
You can have it, Heather.
I will go for number five. No, I was going...
Heather. What should council priorities be when making grants to the community?
And what letter? Paul, what letter?
Sorry, that is A.
A, thank you.
No, V. Sorry, I read it the wrong way. V.
V for victory.
No, Paul, could you just repeat the actual question on the card?
It's not the letter V.
Yeah, V.
And it's, what should council priorities be when making grants to the community?
V for victory.
Thank you very much and having been on this committee a number of times and the fact that I have quite a lot of relationships into the nonprofit community, I'd like to say that all community needs are vital to the group that is putting forward their application. The criteria that we use is published and reviewed on a regular basis to ensure that the community needs at the time are being met. But I think a key thing in terms of our priorities is really to say, where does our limited, very limited budget, how far can it go and how best can the community organisations actually deliver for upper hut?
Thank you very much. And Matt, I haven't forgotten about you. It is your turn.
Okay, thanks.
Number would you like?
Could I go for number sixteen if it's there?
Question for Matt.
What letter?
Are coun- oh, it's A, sorry, it's A. Are council policies helping small businesses survive and grow? That's the question for you, Matt.
Yeah, look, I, I think they are. I think the issue we're probably specific in Uppahut is probably difficulty with some of the landowners and areas where councils end work. Obviously, we know our main street is, is really struggling, our CBD is struggling and to make an attractive place for businesses to work is probably the difference in terms of policies and enablement. I think we absolutely are. If you look at the growth that we've had and the businesses that are occupying there and a number of the sort of manufacturing industry of Wallaceville. So Uppahut is growing and there are more people moving in, a bit of a challenge for our CBD and to bring some of those smaller commercial businesses in.
Thank you, Matt. Oh, and we have a button from Gubrit, aka Dylan.
Yeah, it's respect for Matt, what he said, but I feel that I've been seeing a few businesses around Main Street and spoken to them about their concerns. I believe there's some helpers there, but the, our local businesses, I think we have got about 3,000 businesses in Uppahut approximately. So I feel that the, the concerns take too long, that there's a bit of paperwork for them and there's a little bit of high fees and we need to speed up on the approvals and cut on the unnecessary paperwork to make it easier for the new businesses and existing businesses to do well. So that'll help us creating more jobs and obviously involvement of the youth and work and the participation from all age groups. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next round. We're starting with Nigel. Your turn.
What number, what number would you like, Nigel?
I'd like number two, please. I'm working methodically through the options.
Thank you. Question Y. Why?
Why not?
Why not?
Uppahut City Council operates two council-controlled organisations. Can you name them?
No. I, I had a guess at the library as one of them and the swearing pools the other, but I, I am not confident that those are council-controlled organisations.
Thank you Nigel. Oh, and we have a button. Bill?
For those at home, yeah, sorry, you keep forgetting. Yeah, they are Wellington Water from the Maidstone Hub in Farinaki.
Well done, thank you. Henry?
Number seventeen, please.
Number seven.
Seventeen.
No, they're all done. These are the ones that you can choose from.
I'll go number twenty-five then.
Question AB. What's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you intend on delivering on that?
I think all priorities, we're going to find out when we learn that whether we get in, we get to stand or not, but the priority is quite obvious now for me is that we connect the youth to our society. We continue to work and I believe if those at home, those who know me and have done in this community as a volunteer and stuff, I'll stand by it that I'm one of those people that have got a lot of energy and will all come in fine when we decide what we're looking for. And I'm really, really big on that is that the community for the future, we have to build our youth, we have to stand on that and open all those doors and continue for our future of our city. Thank you.
And we have a button. Gubrit?
Yeah, thank you once again for the opportunity. I believe that we need to focus on the basics at the most right now. It is very clear voice from the community that they want to fix the basics, balance the books. The rates are increasing and we really, really need that we pass in on essentials for now during this cost of living crisis, inflation, and we just put our focus on the basics to fix our roads, streetlights, footpaths, parks, put more accessibility for the people with mobility challenges. And obviously there are some other areas that we can work, but we need to focus on the basics so we can keep our rate fairer.
Thank you very much. All right. Yeah, we have, we have a button from Matt.
In terms of priorities, one thing that's important to know is that we're going to go through some of the biggest change. Half of our spend through water is going to go centrally into a regional model and really important at this time that we don't lose sight of that and we make sure that Uppahut is well represented and ultimately the consumers and the funders for this model are well represented. So that's an important thing to keep track of. And I think experiencing in the detail of the planning and also having worked at the drinking water regulator, I understand inherently what the model looks like, but also what good looks like in that space. So it's one of the big priorities for me.
Thank you, Matt. All right, next up is Rachel.
What number did I, twenty-one. Sorry. I forgot what my number was.
Got there, got there in the end.
Yes.
Question X. What do you think is missing out on local government participation? Sorry, who do you think?
I think young people.
Question X, yeah.
Yep, so I think the people missing out on local government participation are young people, busy working families and those without good internet access and those that don't really even know how to use the internet. I think we need to create more flexible and accessible ways for them to get involved. If people can't reach council, then I think council should reach them.
Thank you very much. And we have a button. Heather? Microphone?
Yeah, missing out on local government participation is older people. Older people in our community, a lot of them are excluded because they are not online, not confident with using digital technology. We don't have many people attending our meetings, but we do have people watching online, but neither of those opportunities suit older people. And I think we really need to think about who votes and it's older people are very good at voting and we need to consider them outside of digital technology.
Thank you very much. All right, we have another button from Rachel. Oh, sorry, Helen, sorry.
It's okay, I could be a Rachel. So one of the things that I think that are missing and I've got to support Henry here are our young people who feel disengaged and unheard. I think Maori and other ethnic minorities whose perspectives are sometimes underrepresented. I also think low income and vulnerable residents who might lack time, resources and access to participate. I also think people with disabilities facing physical and communicative barriers, those without reliable or digital internet, which I support councillor Newell with, as seniors in our rural, limiting access to online consultation. These are just some of the people that I think we do not reach.
Very much. All right, let's see if I can get this right. We are back to Gubrit.
Question K. What are your ideas for helping people who do not have good internet access to be involved and have their say?
Yes, another interesting question to me because I have come across a lot of elderly people, they use transportation cross. I think we need to, obviously they do not, they're not so good at the internet, so we need to do some newsletters for them. We need to organise in-person meetings as much as possible and post letters probably. They like being old school, the young generation like us more of emails and things, but they love to have a letter in their letterbox and when they see a letter, put a smile on their face too. So I think it helps engaging. That is a big lack in the council right now, that, that is not a strong community engagement. A community advisor group can be a good option as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a button. Rachel?
So I'd just like to add to it because I think it's really important. We're becoming a world that constantly assumes everyone's online and we're not, we're not all online. And as Heather said before about older people especially, for me, I'd like to see more face-to-face engagement, maybe pop-up stores in city centre, surveys and community hubs and local drop-in sessions where people can share ideas and concerns in person. But what I'd like to see is us actually going out to groups. Let's go out to where are our people? Where, where are our community? They're at sports clubs, they're at things with their kids, let's go out to places like that. And that's the sort of thing I'd like to see, a little bit more of that type of community engagement.
Okay, now we have Matt. Oh, Heather, I'm sorry.
Yes, I don't think I can be confused for Matt.
No, no, I really don't think so.
I'll go for number fourteen, please.
Question U. How should Uppahut work with the regional council to improve local transport?
Thank you, Paul. We already do work with the regional council in terms of improving local transport and making sure that our voice is heard at the regional level. This is really a question for our regional council representative because I feel that we are doing the best we can to advocate for our community with the regional council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, have I missed anyone? Nope, all right. Next round. Nigel? Your turn.
I think number three has gone, so I'll take four, please.
I saved it for you.
Good man, good man.
You're, you're so kind.
Double A question. Tell us what you think of local government or local democracy, Nigel?
I, I'm in favour of local government and local democracy. I suppose that's why I'm here as a candidate. But I think that we need to increase representation of underrepresented groups. I think that we need a Maori ward in Uppahut and so that will be something I'm working towards if I'm on council for the next triennium.
Thank you Nigel. And we have a button from Helen.
Hi. I really think that local democracy is really important. It is the closest level of democracy for any of our people in our community. It's where decisions directly affect our everyday lives from roads, parks, water and community services. Strong social democracy remains, means residents have a real voice, transparency in the norm and councils are accountable and be responsive. When local government works well, it builds strong trust, strengthens communities and makes sure everyone's needs are considered. That's why I'm passionate about serving and making sure Uppahut's lead democracy is open, inclusive and effective.
Thank you Helen. That will be the last button. And Matt?
Can I go for number eight, please?
It's already gone, Matt. Would you like number six?
Sure, yeah, six is good.
Question B. Is rate money being spent responsibly?
B?
B.
Yeah, thanks, I heard the question. Look, I guess that's probably one of the things I'm most proud of, of this term is that after over a decade of not running a balanced budget of using debt to service renewals and, and not depreciating any of assets, which means basically not putting any money that could replace our assets when they come to age. We're in a pretty dire debt and that's, you know, it equals a lot of interest to pay for rate payers. So to change that policy in our long-term plan so that we do put money away on new assets and we sit so we can replace them and the fact that we're working towards a balanced budget so we're not spending the earning. It has meant rate increases in the short term, but the long-term means we don't kick down to future generations.
Thank you very much, Matt. All right, Bill?
Eighteen.
Sorry, did I miss a button there? No?
Question F. How will you fit in council meetings with your other commitments, like bowls?
Sorry, that wasn't on the question.
No. No, number, yeah, well, I'm lucky. I'm, I own a business with good staff and I have lots of flexibility of time and that's the most important, is flexibility of time and, and you must enjoy reading. And yeah, yeah, I don't have any problem with commitments for council.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, what, did I, did I miss something, Rachel?
No, I was telling him to put his microphone on.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm down the line of sight, so just throw something. Yeah, just me throw something. How's that? Okay, Henry, your turn.
Thank you. Makes it easy.
Question P. Do you think Uppahut City Council should establish a dog park?
This is a tricky question. I'm not a pet owner myself. I did grow up with a lot of dogs and it was fun at times. I do have chickens, but a, a dog park, I know a lot of the community have voiced a need for a dog park, but are we still talking about keeping rights down? Because there's, Uppahut's full of nature, a lot of free land that we can take our dogs to responsibly on leashes. If we're still talking about keeping rights down, I think we should ask ourselves that when we talk about dog parks and a few couple of privileges. We're in a time of need and we should think about spending responsibly on our needs.
Thank you, Henry. Well said. All right. Helen?
Could I please have twelve?
Question J. Could Uppahut City Council be more open with its information and meeting access? If so, how?
I think this one has been on everybody's mind. Transparency pledges for Uppahut City Council, I think is really, really important. I believe Uppahut City Council deserves a council that is open, honest and accountable to its community. And if I was elected, this is what I would do. I would make council information clear and easy to understand in plain language summarising and...
and visual guides for all in the community. Ensuring all meetings and workshops are live-streamed and archived online for anyone to watch at any time. Opening up important discussions to the public unless there is a vital legal reason why it should be closed. Providing tools that let residents track decisions from start to finish, including how public feedback shapes outcomes. Creating more meaningful opportunities for residents to participate, speak and influence council decisions. Adopting a transparency by default approach, sharing information freely unless legally required to keep it confidential. Together we build a more open and connected Upper Hut where everyone's voice is heard.
All right, we have a button from Matt.
Yeah, thanks. I guess one thing that's important to me on this is that we've had closed doors many, many, many years. It's only been in the last term through a lot of advocacy. The new councillors on there like myself to actually look for more transparency and open these up so that doors organisation that makes decisions in the dark. We now publish the workshop agendas, but I think that they can be streamed just like our council meetings are and people can actually see the questions that we advise that we're receiving. So that they know that the decision-making is made and it's not any sort of closed-door or secret type work.
Thank you, Matt. And we have a button from Heather.
I would like to clarify that we don't make any decisions behind closed doors. We make decisions in council meetings which are available to the public and are live-streamed. Yes, we have workshops that are not open to the public, but those workshops are for us to have briefings and to give us time to investigate some of the issues that could crop up. But when we make decisions, they are made in public.
Thank you. Now, I think we've used both your buttons.
I have, I was gonna ask him, I'll have another one, but that's okay.
What do people think?
No.
Yeah? All right.
Well, now I might need to save it.
All right, go right ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to add to that because I think council does try and provide information and access and it's, I guess it's up to us to go and find what we need to know. But I'd just like to see better engagement with the community because a lot of people just don't know. They don't actually, a lot of our people don't even know that they can ask questions or that they can find out information from the council and that's where I think we're missing a step. So to me, that community engagement and getting the information out there is super important.
Well said.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, regret.
Question W. What political party are you linked to?
None. I'm running as a councillor independent and I believe that running as a councillor independent is very important to work along the central government in so many prospects. And I would love to engage with all of them to bring the best for Upper Hut. So if I come to in any conflict, I would love to declare it and let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we have a button from Nigel.
I have worked for years as a clown and I was once invited to entertain at a function that was held in the Great Hall of Parliament and that's the only way that I got in on a party list.
All right. Next, Heather.
Paul, can I have number nineteen, please?
Yes.
Very polite.
Question M.
M for mercy.
What are your ideas for achieving more public participation in local government decisions?
I think the answer to this one is quite simple. We need to be out there more, communicating with our communities, taking the interests of local people right out to them. We also have some government changes that are required to be communicated and we have a lot of pressures and consultations, but basically we need to be out there.
Well said. Rachel.
Number ten, is it still there? Yes.
Question Z. If a candidate is found to be breaking the campaign rules, do you believe that candidate should publicly own the mistake or issue or should it be able to be brushed under the rug and why?
Actually, I don't know why I was looking at my notes for that. Because like absolutely, they should own it. If you break the rules, you need to own it and you shouldn't be breaking the rules, for goodness sake. Standing for council, you need to be open and honest and transparent and if you're not, then you shouldn't be here.
Thank you, Rachel. Matt, you're up.
Do you want to pick, Paul? I can't see.
Would you like number eleven?
Sounds good.
Question S. Do you think council should be involved in providing social housing and if so, how?
Oh, tough question. Look, I don't think we have the resources to actually manage that appropriately. More advocating through our community housing, we should be in trust, we should be also advocating more with Kung Aura, making sure that we're actually opening up housing and new developments. So there's policy positions that we could take with the developers and part of our planning. But in terms of actually owning social, I think we wouldn't do it justice.
Thank you, Matt. All right, we have three minutes left. So what should we do? Should we? Yeah? All right, speed, speed round?
It's speed day.
All right, let's do it, let's do it. Okay, let's start from the first one. And we are going to have. Helen.
Twenty-seven, sorry.
Missed my water.
Okay, thirty seconds.
Question E. What are your priority areas for expenditure?
Okay, thirty seconds. Maintain and renew existing assets before building new ones. Value for money, every dollar must deliver measurable benefits to the community. Future-proofing, spend with long-term sustainability in mind, climate, population growth and tech change. Engage early, major spending priorities should be shaped with resilience and put not after the fact.
Well done, well done. All right, Henry, you're up.
Seventeen, please.
Question Q. What budget line expenditure would you remove to help rates down in Upper Hut during, without disrupting basic services?
I think when we're talking about services, we're talking about our needs. In the budget line, I'm not quite familiar with it because obviously I'm new to the show, but I, there's a few that has come to mind, that Farinaki, the hub, the sports hub and the pools. So what are the expenditures going there? I believe that it's put up to the voice of the community. What would you like to remove and pick one? Because I think one of those ones there, obviously the council is forever propping up our community services. So there's one there that doesn't return as much as the others. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, you're up.
Number twenty, all right for you, Matt?
Sounds good.
Question T. Should we have more cycle lanes in Upper Hut, Matt?
I actually think yes, I've still been an advocate for this. I think in the design, when we're looking at our, we should. I bike to school from Silverstone to Maidstone with just ludicrous. The roads coming on to Ferguson Drive are dangerous, there's go on our own. The problem is cost, so we need to be clever, we need to have a long-term transport strategy so that when we do incremental change, we can fit them in and not just, I guess, sort of commuter problem like we see in Wellington City. So sure needs to be planned well there.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, Heather.
Could we still butt in or?
Yep.
That's all.
Okay, just twenty-three.
Question G. What is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Listen and learn, no prejudging, careful consideration, do your homework and your research and keep an open mind. Otherwise, you are in trouble. Thank you.
Short and sweet. Thank you very much. All right, Bill.
Bill, you've got number twenty-four.
Bill, you've gained twenty-four.
L. What part of the community or business sector does council need to work more closely with?
Okay, probably the whole lot. We need to work with the business sector and actually find out what they want. We're not, we don't have a monopoly on good ideas and we need to work a lot closer with the community as to what we can achieve and what they really want. We are very bound by the financial side of it, but the business sector will have good ideas and work out what they can work with and the same as the community.
Thank you, Bill. Last, Rachel.
What is your view on residential, commercial and industrial growth in the district?
Well, Heather?
Oh, that's D.
D. So growth is inevitable, but it needs to be smart growth. That means planning ahead so housing developments have the infrastructure and services they need, supporting commercial and industrial growth that brings local jobs and protecting the green spaces and environment that makes Upper Hut a great place to live in.
Well done. All right, we went a little bit over. So I'd like to thank our question host, Paul. Our candidates. Our audience and our workers here. And Stacey. All right, we'll be back in 10 minutes with hard-hitting questions. Are you clear? Tam? Clear? Clear?
Are we about to watch?
Yeah.
We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're a cool tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm working mad, head to the lobby. I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean, your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far.
I always get a little bit concerned when we're talking regionally with populations, so we don't get a lot of voices in that room or in that space. I also think we're incredibly resilient as a location. And if we're looking at amalgamating, then you start to erode and you start to think about the fault lines. And are we going to have the councils currently hold that we don't ourselves? The other thing I think is concerning is align rates. We are the lowest city in terms of rate constituents pay, so that will be a risk. But there is some benefit. People can move from around the region and they know what the planning looks like within the business. Look, I'm up for the discussion, but I do have some concerns.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, Heather.
Thank you very much. Amalgamation in the region is not on the table right now, but I think we could enhance our collaboration. On water, for example, we are working with the other councils in the area. And I think collaboration could be the way forward rather than amalgamation.
Thank you, Heather. Rachel.
I think while amalgamation can create efficiencies, it means quite often that communities can lose their voice and decision making becomes really distant. Upper Heart has its own identity and needs. For me, I'd want really strong proof that any amalgamation would benefit our residents before I would support something like that. But I agree with Heather, collaboration definitely. Any changes must put Upper Heart first.
Thank you, Rachel. Henry.
Do you think, sorry, amalgamation? Obviously, I'm new. I haven't been in that chat, but as a resident and someone that loves Upper Heart, I think it's could be damaging to the bigger picture going forward for our city. And let's not forget, Upper Heart's pretty big. It's a pretty big place and it's continuing to grow. And I feel like the voice and our identity will get a little bit watered down if we go into some super city sort of voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Bill.
Hi. Yeah, no. We, yeah, collaboration is the answer, definitely. But we will lose our independence, our identity, and we'll have less say in our communities. If you want to have parking meters or everything in Upper Heart, fine. You want to have higher rates, yeah, let's go for it. People are saying we should amalgamate mainly because it'll save the costings in the 190-odd staff that we have. It won't. If they are busy, it won't. It'll just put them down lower heart. We will lose our identity and we will end up like Patoni, Wainui and Eastbourne, who were doing fine and then Lower Heart took them over. And guess what Patoni's biggest problem is now? Is the parking meters. Nobody will go down.
Thank you, Bill. Dupreeh.
Yeah, I think I pretty much agree with the candidates and it's good to see that we all have a similar answer to this question. We love the independency. I think the Upper Heart people, we are a family of 50,000 people here and we love to be independent, but at the same time, we need to work collectively in some areas where we can save some money and we can work towards the progress. So we have seen some examples as there is, and the question itself says the Auckland City. So I know a few candidates there and an existing councillor as well, and they're not liking the idea very much of a super city. So I believe that we should be independent, but at the same time, we need a collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Nigel.
Democracy can be tricky. If we were joined with Lower Heart, for example, they'd be more than twice the size of Upper Heart and so we would lose control over our assets and what was done to us. So I'm opposed to amalgamation. It's also the reason why I'm in favour of Maori wards, because partly how people can vote the way they want, but it overlooks the needs of tangatafenua. And that I think is the reason why we should have avoided amalgamation and worked to get Maori wards in Upper Heart.
Thank you, Nigel. Helen.
Thank you. Like many of those standing for council have agreed that amalgamation has its pros and cons. The biggest issue for us is that our neighbouring councils have all got a referendum asking their community if they want to do amalgamation. We're the only ones that are not doing it. So I see that the pressure is going to come down on our council and our people. I remember when we did this conversation with our community, it was a resounding, "No, we do not." I'm all about collaboration, making sure that we can cut costs and share costs and look at any avenue where we can come together and a consensus. But my fear is when I look at the regional council and I look at how many councils are involved, we only get one voice around that table. And that's my fear, that we lose our identity and we lose our voice. Happy to have the conversation with the community, but I don't believe they're ready for it. They're ready for consolidation and collaboration and look at where we can work together.
Thank you very much. All right. Hard hitting question number two. Do you think you have any personal or professional relationships that could become a conflict of interest while serving as a council member? And this time we're starting with Matt.
Kyra, no. And interesting when we talk about personal relationships is that we're deeply involved in the community and can represent each part of the community. You know, I'm involved in rugby, I'm involved with my daughter at school and her sports. We get, you know, generally involved through clubs, our own sports we do. I think it's an interesting dilemma. Personally, absolutely, I register my contacts, my conflicts or potential conflicts and the room, we're away from the table when decisions are made, but it's something you should be open and transparent about. But yeah, nothing that would risk me as a, or serving as a councillor. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Helen.
Hi. I don't have any conflicts of interest that I'm aware of, but I do understand that it's up to the individual to actually recognise whether they do have a conflict of interest. And when they do recognise that, they need to make it very loud and clear, whether it's a pecuniary or a non pecuniary. And when I mean that is, is it financial or non financial? And I have to state that our standing orders in Upper Heart City Council are not very clear on that. So I look forward to what central government are proposing, that we do a standardised conflict of interest code of conduct and standing orders. And I look forward to seeing what that might look like.
Thank you very much. Henry.
I don't, I don't think I have any conflicting relationships with being in the council. I'm a GDO, a game developer for rugby at the Upper Heart Rams, and I do sit on the committee, but I haven't been to a committee meeting as of because I was coaching this year. And I do believe that when it comes down to him, like Helen, it's up to the individual to declare that. And I will always do and see, say it, and I'll do it what's best for Upper Heart as a collective. Doesn't matter what I'm involved in, as long as it comes down to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather.
Thank you very much. We do have definitions around what might comprise a conflict of interest, as Helen pointed out. And we are asked to report regularly on whether we think that at this particular time or this particular issue that's in front of us, as to whether we might have a conflict of interest. But right at this present moment, I have none.
All right. Bill.
Yes, no. I don't have any that I am aware of. We do have a pecuniary interest form that we fill out every year and I put down all the things that I do and all the things that I own. And that seems to be all right. And yes, if I felt there was a conflict of interest or anything like that, I would step away from the table.
Thank you, Bill. Rachel.
I don't have any conflicts of interest, personal or professional, but I have, I've been a member of many committees, an Upper Heart sports committees, dancing committees. I've been a public servant, so I know, I have so many different relationships. For me, it would be anything that I was part of the decision-making process and I knew that there was something there, I'd absolutely declare it. So, but as of now, nothing.
All right. Matt. Oh, sorry, sorry. Dupreeh.
Thank you. I have zero percent conflict of interest in this manner. And if anything occurs in the future, I will be more than happy to declare and be transparent. Thank you.
Nigel.
I'm a member of Forest and Bird. I'm a founder of the Upper Heart Housing Trust. I belong to a church in Silverstream, but I don't see that any of those are going to give me a conflict of interest. And if there is a conflict that arises, I'll be happy to declare it.
All right. Hard hitting question number three. What is your position on retaining the Maori Maori constituency for Greater Wellington Regional Council? And why do you hold that position? How did I do with the pronunciation? Okay. All right. All right.
Quite good, quite good. Same glass, but the one that you wrote screws up.
Okay. All right. So this one. Henry.
Is this question targeting at that if they should have a seat? Okay. I think myself, I'm Samoan. I was brought to New Zealand through an opportunity and I do respect the fact that New Zealand is a very diverse country as well as Upper Heart, you know, where we were growing up. And I feel like they should have, because like Nigel referred to at the start, that, you know, we vote for all our own interests and what's good for us. And for some of us, we're just voting for what's good for our family, but we don't, sometimes we forget and we miss the opportunity to think about outangatafenua, their place and their land. So I think they, I would stand that they should have a voice and a seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Bill.
Yes, that's really a decision for Greater Wellington Regional Council, but yeah, we will be voting on it. I am still up in the air of which way I would vote. I did vote against the having a referendum in Upper Heart because of the cost. But Wellington Regional is different, very different, because there's a lot of, you know, land and water and things that really do, that they bring a lot of consultancy from Maori and Maori leaders into it. And that may change my vote to voting for one for them.
Thank you, Bill. Helen.
Thank you. And I'm just going to get on the back of what my colleague said, which is Bill Hammond, with regard to the Greater Wellington Regional Council. Yes, I agree that there is a lot of synergy there and I would support them having a Maori seat around the table. When you're looking at after Papa Tuonuku, the Y, all of those things, that is the area that Greater Wellington Regional Council look after. And there are so many synergies there that come into the ko papa of Maori-dom. So I see that their voice at that table is very, very important, so it would get my vote.
Thank you, Helen. Heather.
I couldn't really say it any better than Helen said it there. This is a completely different issue than the one that we had to deal with ourselves. We don't have wards in Upper Heart, we're somewhat of a rarity. And there were issues around, how do I put it? The democracy. Sorry? Proportionality of the population. Yep, absolutely. So in this case, yes, I will be voting yes.
Nigel.
I am in favour of retaining the Maori constituency.
All right. Rachel.
I support retaining tu'upukua tika Maori Maori constituency. Dedicated Maori representation ensures manaafenua and Maori voices are part of regional decision-making, which strengthens outcomes for the whole community. Maori seats strengthen decision-making and really reflect our commitment to partnership.
Matt.
Yeah, Kyra, I guess the disappointing thing is feedback. The disappointing thing is, I guess, why isn't the question, you know, do you support a Maori ward? It's one of the few on Upper Heart that actually voted for both initially and through the vote on the referendum. I'm incredibly disappointed that we don't. We should be representing Maori regionally. My wife, my children, fa kapaiau, and I just know that the Maori world view is inherently communal and inherently better outcomes, sheer better outcomes across the community. So for Greater Wellington Region.
Thank you, Matt. Dupreeh, you're up.
Yes, I'm in a favour of Maori ward. I believe that I myself have come from a multicultural background, so it is a strong opinion that we have diverse voices on the table. The matter is only that we get the most capable people on the table from that community to serve the community. So yes, I am in a favour of it. Thank you.
That is the end of the list.
But this time I'm not running over to Nick. It's in a very rare situation where they have chosen not to go forward with the referendum, but Greater Wellington Regional Council has, so all voters will still be subjected to the referendum. And the interesting uniqueness in Upper Heart is the fact that both the regional council, like candidate Rose Connelly has been elected and her Maori constituency councillor has been also elected unopposed. So you won't see the regional council on the ballot paper. Great news, won't get STV first class post-continue. But the thing is, every Upper Heart voter will be voting in one Maori ward referendum. Now, if we look at Nick or we look at myself, okay, we are voting in two Maori ward referendums because I live in Wellington City Council, Nick lives in Kepi Coast District Council. They've got a Maori ward at the district council level and a Maori ward at the regional council level. So just, so while Upper Heart's not doing it, the regional council is. And just be aware, you know, make sure you do sit down and take that into account when you get your ballot papers out there, because it is a very important issue and it's something not to sit there and skip. Is that not coming through? Oh, okay. Yeah, this is why Henry was online and the weird way is we've got this lineup. So yeah, when you do come to it, just remember Upper Heart voters, you do have to vote in the Maori ward referendum for the Greater Wellington Regional Council. And we're hoping that now you're not going to get voting papers shot when you get your ballot papers in about a month's time.
Thank you, Sam. Okay. We are up to our closing statements and I have generated the list again and we are starting with Dupreeh.
Amazing. Thank you so very much for the opportunity today. As I mentioned myself in the earlier, that I am in Upper Heart for Upper Heart, most of my time through my work is on your roads, streets, your groves, your avenues. So I'll be easily approachable to all of you. I strongly believe in listening, advocating and delivering the positive results. I'm open for healthy discussions, constructive feedbacks and a positive criticisms that leads us to a positive outcomes. So I ask for your vote. Last elections, we had a very little polling, but this elections, I would encourage you all because the cost of living in all this scenario is hitting all of us. So please come forward to vote for this generation and the future generation. So I ask for all of your precious vote. Please vote for me. I will not disappoint you. I'll be your strong voice on the table. Thank you.
Heather.
Thank you very much. I am a steady hand and now is not the time for radical change around the table. Yes, we need fresh inspiration. We need some younger people, but we also need the voice of experience and that is something that I bring to the table. Recently, I've been Chair of Policy, Chair in the past of Hut Valley Services. I'm interested in resource management and I have eight terms of experience. I also believe that local government is somewhat in my family. And I just want to share one of my most proud moments ever was when my own son stood for council and got over 4,000 votes. Unfortunately, 4,000 votes is not enough to get elected, but for an 18-year-old, this was a marvelously great achievement. And so, yes, with local body in my blood, I hope to be around again, working in Upper Heart.
Matt, your closing statement.
Yeah, Kyra, thank you. But this is my second time running for council. Some of the things I managed to achieve in the first round, making sure we weren't spending our money in a better replacement so that we're not doing to our kids what has been done to us in terms of, you know, aging assets that haven't, we don't have funding to replace. I'm well connected to the service, that's through the military. And then more recently, as a public servant, I live here and work in Wellington, so I understand some of the issues we face daily. Kids that have grown up here and I understand some of the challenges that we have, city, some of the difficulties that they are going to face trying to find jobs. So I'm here to advocate for that and I'm here to continue spending our money wisely, making sure that we actually represent the community well.
Thank you, Matt. Helen.
Thank you. So I'm Helen Swales and I've had the privilege of being the deputy mayor for two terms. I'm asking for you to vote me back on council because I believe that I can do the hard work that matters the most for our community. I've got a strong voice for businesses, I've got a strong voice for community groups and for everyday residents that live in our community. So together, we can keep Upper Heart moving forward, growing sustainably and protecting what we love, making sure that our city remains a place where people want to live. So I'm asking you to return me back to council by when you receive your voting papers, voting for me, because I will be a proven and committed voice around the table. Vote Helen Swales.
Thank you, Helen. Henry.
Fafatai, 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 tēlava. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am Hinu Gray. Upper Heart holds a special place in my heart. In 2010, I moved from Samoa through a life-changing opportunity to attend St Patrick's College Silverstream. I have lived, raised my family and called Upper Heart home. I was raised with the belief that we live a life of service. Over the years, I've been involved in our community as a volunteer firefighter and as a rugby game developer for the Upper Heart Rams. I believe in empowering our young people, supporting cultural connections and ensuring our diverse community feels heard. As Upper Heart continues to grow, I want to help guide growth in the right direction to listen, observe and take action. I will work hard to represent shared interests and challenge where necessary. Let's build a future for Upper Heart that reflects the strength, heart and potential for everyone, for everyone that who calls it home. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Bill.
Hi. And thanks, everybody that's come out here and thanks for, it's in the ballot for putting this on. I'm Bill Hammond. I've done one term at council and gee, what a learning curve that was. I've never read so much stuff in my life and ended up quite enjoying it. It would be, I think, the first three years definitely is what you do, you just learn. You just, you know, use your, you know, your two eyes and your one mouth. And then you just work out what you can achieve and what's important to you. And the most important thing I've learned for my first three years is to be focused on what was best for Upper Heart and respect for everybody else's views and attitudes and just work it out from there. I was a Braeburn baby from Upper Heart and I've been brought up here. I've run a business now for 43 years, trying to retire from it. And the only way I'm used to actually seeing, working out my ideas and my, and how things work on the way home in the vehicle, it's a fair job trying to convince 10 others that you've got to, that you've got to get anything across. But hey, vote for me and we'll see what happens.
Rachel.
Tēnā tātou, nama Hinui ka kauta katoa. I actually didn't prepare a closing statement, so vote for me, I guess. No, please vote for me because I love Upper Heart. I want Upper Heart to continue to be the wonderful place that I grew up in, that my children and my grandchildren can be proud of, so that they want to stay here and don't want to move from Upper Heart. I, if I get onto council and I'm one of your councillors, I'll be a voice at the table for anybody. And I'll always do my best for Upper Heart.
Thank you, Rachel. Nigel.
I've been serving the community through Forest and Bird and the Upper Heart Housing Trust and some church involvement. And I am Nigel Bender, standing for Upper Heart City Council.
All right. Well, that brings us to the end of our show. I would like to thank our candidates, our audience, our crew, Sam, Stacey, Logan and myself. And we are a non-profit organisation and any donation helps. Speak to Sam. He's the man. And good night, Upper Heart. And good night, Uppahut.